Good morning. Today is October fifteenth, twenty twenty four. It's a regular meeting of the King County Board of Supervisors. Madam Clerk, please call roll.
Joe Nevs.
Here.
Richard Valley.
Here.
Doug Verboon.
Here.
Rusty Robinson.
Here.
Richard Fagundes.
Here.
I hear you're getting a new phone, right, Doug?
All members are present. We're ready to conduct business today. At this time, we'd all please rise for Pastor Lori Niles, Hanford, Leighton Church of the Death Range. Morning, Lori. Thanks for coming.
You know, I'm having a rough morning here, dripping in and all that. I hope y'all have a better morning. And let's pray. We thank you, Lord, for this group of leaders who are willing to humble themselves at the beginning of their business day. And we ask that you would bless them with wisdom and discernment as they take on their tasks. We ask that you would remind them that the measure of any society is determined by how we take care of those who are most vulnerable. In the words of many of our leaders. And so this morning, Lord, we ask that you would bless every aspect of our democratic society. Bless these folks at the local levels and all the way on up the line. We trust in God, as our motto says. Amen.
Thank you. Please follow me. We salute our nation's flag. Read the lou. Okay, at this time, we're going to go to county service awards. Carolyn Leest. Carolyn, good morning.
Good morning, Chairman and members of the board. Carolyn Leest, Human Resources Director. I'm here today to present the county service awards. Today, we gather to recognize the exceptional contributions of employees from administration, clerk of the board, and the sheriff's office. Public service is more than a job. It's a calling that reflects profound commitment to improving the lives of our community members. Every day, dedicated individuals bring their skills, time, and passion to ensure the well-being of and progress of Kings County. To honor this commitment, we have the Kings County Service Awards Program established in nineteen seventy seven, which celebrates the invaluable contributions of our employees. This program acknowledges full-time service presenting awards after five years of continuous employment and then in five-year increments thereafter. It's a chance to publicly recognize not just the length but quality of service our workforce provides, reinforcing the significance of their efforts. Each recipient will receive a certificate highlighting their years of dedicated service, along with the option to select an award, either cash or commemorative mento. Notifications for the selections have been sent to the eligible employees. As we proceed, I will present the awardees by department. When your name is called, please come forward to receive your certificate and have your photo taken. Afterward, kindly remain in the well for a group photo and the department's recipients. At this time, I'm going to ask Eva and Jessica to come forward. They're going to help with assisting to hand out the certificates and the photos, and I don't know if the chairman wants to come down to take photos with recipients as well. We will call everybody's name, even if they're not here. Amber Souchere. Five years with administration. Also with administration, Lucinda Landeros, twenty-five years. She is not here today, but I do believe Kira wanted to speak on her behalf today.
So Lucinda has been a secretary for minors for over twenty-five years, working under four separate supervising attorneys during that, during her tenure. Lucinda's integral part of her office and ensures the office runs smoothly, which is not always an easy task when working with attorneys. Her twenty-five years of experience and expertise allows her to provide crucial support in many ways. She provides very, variety of administrative clerical functions that support the minors' office. She also acts as a liaison with other agencies, both in and out of the county. Lucinda assists the supervising attorney in preparation of the division's annual budget. It's not every day that you have Lucinda working in the office or division. And her unwavering dedication to hard work are getting harder and harder to come by. We thank her so much for continued hard work, dedication, and loyalty towards the youth in Kings County.
Also with the clerk on the Board of Supervisors, we have Richard Fagundes, fifteen years. All right, next with the Board of Supervisors, we have Richard Valley. Fifteen years of service. We'll make sure that gets put in.
Dollar and a quarter.
That, that's for the administration clerk to the board. The next one is the sheriff's office.
Sheriff's Office. It's a little bigger.
For the sheriff's office, we have five recipients as follows. Eric Alejo. Ashley Conno. James Coughlin. Emmanuel Diaz. Caesar Estrada. Laura Fernandez. Rebecca Nessi. Jesus Robles. Consuelo Sanchez. Patrick Schaefer. Carlos Torres. And Wilfredo Urrias.
They're all working.
The tenured recipients are as follows. Cynthia Calderon. Daniel Carrasco. Jesse Saballos. Kimberly Davis. Travis Day. Ruben Garcia. Kyle Greenwood. LOL LOL. That was a tongue twister. And then next, Arturo Martin Vasquez. Andrew Maza. Christina Morris. Simone Sandoval Hopper. Next, we have Carlos Santos. Maris Salavades. Kendall Van Bensbergen. And Seth Vera. Our next one is for fifteen years, Barbara Blackburn. Twenty-year recipient, Marcus Blevins. And twenty-five-year recipient, Daniel Hostlet. Thirty-year recipients are Alfredo Cortez. And Crystal Thomas. And last but not least, we have thirty-five-year recipient Sandra Pimentel.
Yeah. Yeah.
Thank you for joining us in celebrating the incredible dedication of our county employees. That concludes our presentation this morning. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. At this time, we're going to go ahead and move on to item number three, unscheduled appearances. Any person may directly address the board at his time on any item on the agenda or any other item of interest to the public.
I have no written correspondence. I do have Rosemary Ron as a speaker.
Good morning, Rosemary.
Good morning. Good morning, Chairman, Supervisors, Rosemary Ron, Department of Public Health. I have three brief updates for you this morning. But first off, it's my pleasure to introduce our new executive secretary, Cherie Trevado. Cherie, Cherie comes to us from the district attorney's office where she was a legal secretary. She's a Hanford native and brings a wealth of experience to the department, and we are excited to have Cherie join our team. So we'd like to welcome her. Yeah. And the next update is on H five N one bird flu. Currently, the California Department of Public Health and California Department of Food and Agriculture has reported a total of fifteen impacted herds in Kings County. Thirteen are confirmed positive and two are presumptive positive. Kings County has one presumptive H one N one human case. This case had close contact with infected cows. All presumptive positive test specimens are then sent to CDC for confirmation, and we should receive an update today or tomorrow on the results. All cases, all of the cases that are confirmed have experienced mild symptoms and have been treated per CDC guidance, and there have been no hospitalizations. Currently, the health department is working closely with the impacted dairy employers and workers to provide guidance, personal protective equipment, and symptom monitoring for any signs of infection. The risk to the general public remains low, but people who interact with infected animals like dairy or poultry workers are at the highest risk. We recommend protective equipment to prevent infection for the working, the workers who work with that cattle and poultry. Pasteurized milk and dairy products continue to be safe to consume as pasteurization is fully effective in inactivating the bird flu virus. As an added precaution and according to longstanding state and federal requirements, milk from sick cows is not permitted into the public milk supply. So we'll continue to keep you updated and informed of the situation. I just, I've usually sent you an email, but I also wanted to provide an update. I'm also working closely with Jimmy at the egg commissioners because we're getting a lot of information on this as it comes in.
Thank you.
Any questions on that?
Any questions?
Okay. Lastly, I just want to give you a very brief update on department-related fire and the recent water leak we had in building two. If you weren't aware, we had a flood in February first. April twenty-ninth, we had the fire. And then about three weeks to four weeks ago, we had another water leak in one of the buildings. So one, two, and three have all been impacted with water damage at different times this past year. Currently, all the public health staff are out of buildings one, two, and three on the main health campus. Building staff are currently housed in building five, where the employee health center is. And then four sixty Kings County Drive, the Lemoore Clinic, and the Wick Office on Harris Street. As you're aware, the structured fire significantly damaged and impacted our public health lab. We are currently partnering with Tulare County Public Health Lab to provide laboratory services for the Kings County Health Department. And all specimens are being transported and processed timely and appropriately in Tulare County. It is the department's plan to establish an agreement with Tulare and Fresno as a backup, public health labs, to assist with the department's lab testing until we are able to rebuild. It is the department's intention upon the initiation of the plans for construction and remodeling on the main campus complex to rebuild the public health lab. In the interim, there will be agenda items forthcoming in the next few weeks related to the current lab staff that have been displaced due to the fire. I just wanted to let you know about our plans with the lab. I'm, thank you, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Any question or comments for, all right, Rosemary?
Great. Thank you so much.
That's all the speaker cards that I have, and it doesn't appear anyone online has their hand raised.
Anybody in the audience have anything they would like to say? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next agenda item, which is approval of the minutes report out of closed session from the regular meeting, October eighth, twenty twenty-four.
The board took no report of election.
Thank you. Item B, approval of minutes from regular meeting, October eighth, twenty twenty-four. Moved by supervisor Robinson, second by supervisor Fagundes. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley. Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson. Richard Fagundes.
Yes.
Okay, by the favor, move on now to consent counter. All items listed on consent counter are listed as one motion. Pleasure. Move, move by supervisor Fagundes, second by supervisor Nevs. Madam Clerk, please call roll.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Hi.
Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes.
Okay, by the favor, we'll move on now to item number six, regular calendar, Human Resources Department, Carolyn Leest. Morning. She didn't put your name down.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the board. Melissa Avalos, Principal Personnel Analyst with Human Resources. I'm here today to recommend that the board authorize the Human Resources Director to sign the side letter of agreement with the Prosecutors Association. On September ninth and September twenty-six, twenty twenty-four, the county and the Prosecutors Association met and conferred to discuss the ongoing recruitment and retention issues. To address these challenges, it is recommended by the Board of Supervisors that the Board of Supervisors approve a five-point-oh range adjustment, approximately five percent for all covered employees within the Prosecutors Association, effective October fourteenth, twenty twenty-four, which is pay period twenty-two, twenty twenty-four. This adjustment is intended to improve recruitment efforts, making our positions more competitive, enhance retention of current staff, reducing turnover and its associated cost, and alleviate workload pressures and help burnout among our dedicated employees. The side letter agreement was ratified by the association and staff recommends approval by the board. The fiscal impact, the total cost of implementation of the salary increases is approximately one hundred thirty-five thousand fifty-one dollars for the remainder of the fiscal year. I would like to thank the Prosecutors Association Administration Office and the Board of Supervisors for all their efforts with this. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to address them.
Thank you, Melissa. Any question or comments?
Motion approved.
Give me a motion by supervisor Robinson. We have a speaker behind you, the Sacker.
Thank you. I'm not scheduled to appear today, but I did want to speak to this issue. First and foremost, I want to thank the board. You have taken on a flexible and very strong approach to our retention and recruitment efforts, and I really have to extend my gratitude to you on behalf of Kings County because what you do protects our county. This five percent increase is going to be, make a huge difference. I've reached out to the people that I thought might be good additions to our office. And since then, and in telling them that the board is presently going to decide on the five percent raise, I have since had two additional applications by attorneys with prosecution experience of more than eight years. And this is huge. If we can, if we can implement this raise, I believe that we can address our recruitment and retention efforts. And hopefully, we'll be able to reach full capacity. So I want to thank you for your consideration in this matter, and it's going to make a lot of headway.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion, second by supervisor Nevs. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley. Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson. Richard Fagundes.
Yes.
By the favor, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Move on now to item B, probation permit. And we have. Patricia. Morning.
Hi, good morning. Actually, I'm Kimberly Rankin, Deputy Chief with the Probation Department.
Sorry about that. I'm just going off what I've been reading here.
That's okay.
So thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. I hope everyone's doing well today. So I am here to present to you today, it's a renewal of an ongoing contract that we have with our provider that's called Counseling and Psychotherapy Center, and they provide sex offender treatment for our clients. And also, it's called the containment model, which is a multidisciplinary team, including a probation officer, a treatment provider, a polygraph examiner, and a victim witness advocate. These, these team members meet on a monthly basis to discuss and evaluate our client's performance on probation and to support safe case management in the community for our sex offenders. There's no fiscal impact to the county general fund. The service will be funded from Senate Bill six seventy-eight, funds in budget unit two-three-three-two-zero-zero, which were included in the fiscal year twenty-four-twenty-five adopted budget. Our agreement with this provider does not exceed fifty thousand dollars annually. It's requested that the agreement be approved retroactively from July first, twenty twenty-four. Due to staff shortages and our management positions for our department, this contract took more time than expected to prepare for approval. And it is recommended that the board consider approving this agreement with Counseling and Psychotherapy Center Incorporated. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any question or comments?
Move is presented.
Moved by supervisor Nevs, second by supervisor Fagundes. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Hi.
Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Ray.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on now to public health. We have two items. Good morning.
Good morning, Chairman and Supervisors. Dave Long with Public Health. On April twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-four, there was a structural fire that badly damaged building three and the public health lab, administration, and clinical services. Thankfully, no one was injured, but the department had to pivot quickly and move staff to a new location. We, to secure the building and protect the staff and prevent break-ins, the department obtained emergency permission from the purchasing manager to hire DSS private security. They provided unarmed security guards that covered the campus during evenings, weekends, and holidays, and they provided the required daily fire watch reports. The recovery process exceeded the initial fifty thousand dollar contract, and DSS continued to provide security guard service until it was deemed no longer necessary on August thirtieth. The Department of Public Health has an outstanding balance of forty-one thousand two-hundred-and-eighty-six dollars for the additional services and is asking the Board of Supervisors to approve a resolution to pay the additional balance, which exceeds the initial agreement and adopt the budget change. And I'm available to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, David. Any question or comments?
I have a couple of questions. So, so the total amount was like ninety-one thousand dollars?
It is.
It's a, it's a big bill. So did, did we put fencing or plywood or anything?
We have, and the building right now is surrounded by fencing that Public Works put up. And that will remain while the staff were in there and as the reports were coming in from DSS private security for after-hours and weekends. There's quite a bit of activity that happens, and somebody had thrown a rock through a window. We were concerned that there might be some other activity on campus that might endanger the staff or others. And so DSS stayed there, and they, they cover quite a few hours. We're from the time the staff left at five o'clock until seven o'clock in the morning every evening, and then twenty-four hours over the weekend. So the hours did add up.
I know in some of the developments, the construction developments are using blue lights, trying to discourage the behavior. We have anything like that? And also, are we done with the security now?
We're done with the security. They left on August thirtieth. We terminated the agreement. And then the other question was about blue light. We don't have any blue lights, although the sheriff has agreed to swing by the property and monitor it on occasion.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you. We have motion by supervisor Fagundes. Second by supervisor Nevs. No more questions. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley. Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes.
Okay, by the favor, next item.
Good. I have a second item for you, and that's for RMC Enterprises. The same fire that I mentioned just a moment ago required us to relocate a number of staff to a new location at four sixty Kings County Drive. And to make that suitable for the public health operations, several construction projects were required, some repairs, installing walls, and some privacy features. Due to the urgent need to resume these critical public health services, the department received approval from the purchasing manager to bypass the competitive bidding process. The department engaged RMC Enterprises, a trusted contractor recommended by the Department of Public Works to handle the emergency construction. RMC completed the work quickly and professionally, and the department is now requesting retroactive approval of eighteen thousand one-hundred-and-seventy-two dollars to pay for the services, including a late fee, which remained unpaid. The agreement has been reviewed and approved by county council and risk for safety and legal compliance. I'm available to answer questions.
Thank you. Any question or comments? The move. Motion by supervisor Nevs, second by supervisor Fagundes. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Hi.
Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Richard Fagundes. Richard Fagundis.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is administration. We have Ms. Carrier Martinez. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So two vacancies exist on our CSAC Board of Directors to represent Kings County. On the board, one is a regular member and wasn't, is an alternate for twenty-four-twenty-five. The term of the appointment is for one year commencing on the first day of our CSAC Annual Conference, which is taking place on November eighteenth. Um, at this time, um, it is requested your board select a primary director and an alternative director. Should you uh be available at the, the ten uh the next meeting, then you should be appointed. So attached is a nomination form. Once you select your membership, we will submit that to CSAC.
Very good. Any question or comments? I think right now we have supervisor. Rusty Robinson is primary and I'm secondary, and I, I'm okay to stay in uh secondary if you would like to be a primary. Unless any other board member would like to go in our place.
So move.
Move by supervisor Neves, second by supervisor for goodness. Uh, any more discussion?
Are you going to become a CSAC President if you're not the primary? You get, you get.
Oh, I'm not. I fit in.
All right.
I tried that. It don't work. I'm too vocal.
Okay.
All right. Uh, Madam Court, please call roll.
Joe Neves.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
All right.
Doug Berboon.
Yes.
Restu Robinson.
Yes.
Richard Fagundis.
Five in favor. Thank you. Next item. We have study session. And we have uh Alex Walker. Morning, Alex.
Good morning, sir. Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Board. My name is Alex Walker, Kings County Administration. As we get the PowerPoint on the screen, I'll be presenting a study session item for your review regarding an upcoming overlay for our county's area code, and I'll also be going over what an overlay is and what its implementation would look like. If we go into the next slide, a quick overview, the area code was, the five-five-nine area code was first established in nineteen ninety-eight under the public, the California Public Utilities Commission. As of February of this past year, in twenty twenty-three, we are estimated to be running out of prefixes for our numbers. So we're running out of phone numbers, which is a good thing. It means people are moving into the valley. Businesses are opening up, but that creates a challenge for customers who would like a five-five-nine phone number. So the solution is to implement an over area code overlay. There will be no fiscal impact to the general fund that is known at this time. Any fiscal impact could be reassessed and brought to your board for later consideration, but at this time, this is an informational item about the upcoming change. As we move on to the next slide, we can see some additional background information regarding the history and the jurisdiction powers regarding over area codes and its implementation. The Federal Communications Commission has supreme jurisdiction under current law, federal and state, and the FCC delegates the authority to the state of California to decide how to implement these policies. And Cal, the state of California delegates this to the California Public Utilities Commission. And in accordance with that, they partner with other experts in the field. And there are generally two methods in how to resolve this issue. The first is a geographic split, which hasn't occurred in the United States since two thousand and seven. And the second is an overlay, which keeps the same geographic area, but assigns different area codes. So we're looking at establishing a new area code for the five-five-nine service area. If we move on to the next two slides, I'll make sure that they're up so people can refer to what we're looking at. We'll be able to see that the overlay method is the recommended relief option for the community, and it's done, has been done fourteen previous times to date. So this is the industry standard. This is what's recommended by the Public Utilities Commission, as well as what seems to be the preferred practice by the state, as well as national partners. And then moving on to the following slide, we can see a map of the service area. And I'll give it a second so it can switch.
Who's doing the clicker?
There might be a delay because it's in a remote location, so I might still be talking my introduction by now. But I'll continue on with the presentation as we wait for that to come on screen, but we can see that the five-five-nine area code, as it exists currently, covers the San Joaquin Valley, mostly the Central Valley, particularly areas of Fresno, Madera, Mariposa, Merced, Tulare, and Kings County. In Kings County specifically, there are different service areas outlined by city, which is now on screen. Mostly the incorporated cities are the service areas, and the unincorporated areas of our county, such as Armona, Home Garden, Kettleman, Stratford, et cetera, uh typically lie within one of those two, depending on which one's the closest, with the exception of Stratford, which does have its own due to its geographic size. Moving on to the next slide, this is where we'll discuss the impact that's going to be to county residents, businesses. Essentially, existing customers that have a five-five-five, no, five-five-five, five-five-nine speech dependents are fun, phone number will be able to keep their number. That you're not going to have any costs incurred. This is only going to impact customers who want a new phone number, who have never had a phone number in Kings County before. In addition to that, customers will be assigned to new numbers when they become available and when we run out of five-five-five, five-five-nine phone numbers. In addition to that, the price of the call will not change. What will be changing is how you make a phone call. Typically, when you're calling different locations, you would have to dial one area code and then the number. That is what we'll be having to do for the new three-five-seven phone calls. So it's recommended by the Public Utilities Commission to start making that a habit when you're making your phone calls. Phones, so they typically do that automatically. However, fax machines and different machinery in offices may not be doing that already, so it's important that people reset their devices, make sure that they're getting in the habit of practicing dialing one area code, then the number. That way, there is no interruption of service. Calls to nine-one-one, nine-eight-eight, and other three-digit numbers such as eight-one-one will continue to be dialed as normal. There'll be no impact, as well as no fees associated with that. And then a local call will still be considered a local call, even though it is a different area code. Moving on to the next slide, we can see some of the key dates. August of this, this past August, customers can begin doing the new telephone practice, so dialing one area code and the phone number. In February twenty twenty-five, this, that dialing procedure will become mandatory and essential. In following that, in March twenty twenty-five, customers requesting new phone numbers will be either assigned to five-five-nine or to three-five-seven, depending on the inventory available. As we move to the next slide, we can see what people can do to prepare for the change ahead. As I mentioned, the best practice right now for county residents and businesses is to check their devices, check their fax machines, whatever equipment you're using, to make sure that it is using the dialing one area code phone number procedure. In addition to that, you might want to update your contact cards, businesses, any pet tags, anything like that, so there is no interruption in being able to reach you, as well as assessing your telephone equipment and machinery. Some machinery, depending on the business, may not have access to this technology, so we encourage local businesses to reach out to their vendors to see what is needed for their neat, unique needs. And then, as I said before, update your stationery, your checks, all that good stuff that you have, so you are accessible and reachable. As we move to the next last slide, there are some helpful resources available at the California Public Utilities Commission that encourage residents, businesses, if they want to have a more in-depth examination of what an area code overlay means. But essentially, this is coming, this is needed, and it's a very easy fix. This is not going to have any major impacts to people's financing. Again, if you have your phone number already at five-five-nine, you do not have to change your phone number, but you also do have the option to change your phone number if you would like to. And as we move to the last slide, I appreciate your board's time, and we'd be more than happy to answer any questions you have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any question or comments?
I have a, I have a question, yes, sir. I know it was the, what, North American Plant Administrator with the CPUC, something of that nature? They didn't anticipate this. I mean, you would expect you'd have a number that'd be like five-five-eight or five-six-oh or something of that nature.
So this, we are anticipating this. This was anticipated, and that's why we're taking actions now. This was discussed in public sessions that the public can attend. Anyone in this room could attend those meetings. It was decided in December uh twenty twenty-three that we would be using the overlay. Essentially, I think this means good news. People are coming to the valley. People are wanting to live in the valley. Businesses are open up, but that means there's only a certain amount of phone numbers left. So this is the anticipation happening right now, which is why we're adjusting to this change. And it could happen again in the future if Kings County continues to see a population increase or other people are securing five-five-nine and now to three-five-seven phone numbers. But at this time, this was the appropriate action and the appropriate timeline.
No, I just mean, you would have thought the numbers would have been, been a bit closer. I can live with three-five-seven. That's fine.
We think about it. You think about back when, you know, I moved out of my house at home, I had my own phone number, one phone for six people.
Hmm.
Now we have six phones for one household.
Hmm.
If not more. And some people have two phones. So kindergarten, taking phones to school now. You know, you used to be able to get a hold of somebody with one phone number, and, you know, everybody answered it, had your, you know, actually uh recorders came out later, so everybody has a phone now, if not two. So I don't think we're growing that much. I just think we've got, everybody has a damn phone. You still can't get a hold of some people.
Thanks, Alex.
Thank you, Oliver. Any question or comments from the board? What do you do about your tattoo?
Uh, well, uh, I was a little nervous. I thought we were going to lose our five-five-nine. Well, we had our two-oh-nine, and, you know, I got this uh five-five-nine stomach tattoo.
Got a motion? Motion by supervisor for goodness, uh, Valley?
Just for clarification, it is a study session.
Oh, well, then, you know, don't worry about it. No one has that.
Going to make the next, the next beer. No more five-five-nine.
All three-five-seven, I think.
That's going to start up a whole new culture.
Yeah. Three-five-seven is kind of cool.
Yeah. Wouldn't, but not be a bad bad brew.
Yeah. So right now, we're going to go from one study session to another, and we have the Public Works Department, Dominic Tiberzki. Morning, Dominic.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dominic Tiberzki, Public Works Director. I am here to introduce Samer Schath from the California High-Speed Rail Authority. He is here to present an update to the California High-Speed Rail uh project to the board and the public, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dominic.
Welcome to Kings County.
Thank you. Thank you. Good morning, everybody. Good morning, Chairman. Good morning, Supervisors. My name is Samer Schath. I'm here on behalf of Garth Fernandez, who's the Central Valley Director. He, he's out at the office. Um, so thank you for having some time for us to come and share all the um, the progress uh on the program as well as the construction sites. So the presentation is broken into two um segments. Uh, one, I'll talk about the program side, and then, and then my colleague Ben Ruiz, he'll go over the construction updates with you and share all the amount of work that's been happening out there. Uh, next, please. All right, so um, so this slide, again, this is the program segment of the presentation. We have, we're, we're really focused on the hundred and nineteen miles from Merced to Wasco. Um, that's under construction. Um, and, and there's quite a bit of work out there. Uh, there's at least thirty-five to forty um sites of construction in that segment. Um, the next uh focus for the authority is the fifty-two miles, which will extend from Merced to um I'm sorry, from Madera to Merced, uh, and then on the south end, it would extend alignment to Bakersfield. Um, one of the good news, one of the many good news that we have actually is we've, we've cleared four hundred and ninety-four miles um environmentally. So we say that's good news because that would enable us to compete for funding and, and uh progress the alignment uh on the south and, and north end. The other thing we're focusing on is booking projects, so wherever it makes sense, we partner with Coltrane Electrification and and uh station design, which I'll talk about in a little bit here. Um, but the, one of the other areas of construction or, or under design currently is a station design. So we have four stations under, under design. Um, Merced, Fresno, Kings, Tulare, and, and Bakersfield. And I know you have staff that's, that's uh part of the, the team that's looking at the station and, and gain your comments and um, from, from Kings County and, and Tulare as well. Uh, next, please. So you hear the hundred and nineteen miles, it's broken into three segments. Uh, construction package one, it's from, uh, like I said, from Madera, from Avenue nineteen precisely, Madera all the way to um, to American in Fresno County. That's about thirty-two miles. And the contractor is TPZP. Um, TPZP is uh all of these contracts actually, the design bill. So they have the design uh team as well as a construction team um for that segment. Uh, similarly, construction, uh, construction package two-three, which is um here uh in, in Kings County, that's the sixty-five miles. And then the FGV is the design builder uh for that segment. Construction uh package four, which extends from Tulare, Kern, uh, County Line, all the way to Poplar. Um, and CRB is the design builder for, for that segment. I'm happy to uh let you know that that package is completed. We've reached substantial completion on that package. Uh, next, please.
When do you see the completion of the two-three?
Two-three, um. Hopefully Ben will agree with me, but we, for CP one and CP two-three, we're really pressing hard to complete those two segments uh by end of twenty twenty-six. Um, so the hundred and nineteen miles, uh, we're working feverishly to finish by end of twenty twenty-six. So here's some of the benefits of the program. Um, we, since we've started, we created fourteen thousand plus jobs in the valley. Um, these are construction uh jobs. Uh, well over seventy percent of those jobs are actually uh folks that work in the valley, live in the valley, uh, and that's a breakdown of those jobs by county. So you, you have that on the right-hand side. We also created a Central Valley Training Center. And, and really the, the main purpose for the training center, uh, I'm sorry, Training Center in the, in, in Selma uh is to uh allow folks to get the proper training, the proper certification, so they can compete for these construction jobs. Um, the Training Center is, is purely uh construction uh Training Center, so it's not for office folks, not for engineering. It's folks that, that want to be um in, in the construction field. Um, since we've started that center in two thousand and twenty, we graduated two hundred and six uh folks um and and basically start working with our contractors. Also, another benefit to this program is we have almost a third of the small businesses, um, they're in the Central Valley. So we're creating jobs on a personal level, on, on small business level, um, and that's, that's a huge benefit for this program. Next slide. Uh, this shows that latest uh graduation um out of the Training Center. I believe there was seventeen uh individuals that graduated. Um, it was about, about three weeks ago. Um, again, um, this is a free for, a free of charge for those folks uh that want to actually get the proper training, uh certification, um, so they can apply for jobs, you know, with the two contractors that we have remaining on, on the project. Uh, next, please. So I'm going to pause here and hand it off to, to Ben. Ben will go over the construction sites, uh, specifically in Kings County, and um, he'll have uh quite a fit, a quite a bit to, to share with you.
Thank you. Welcome, Ben.
Thank you, Samer. Good morning, Chairman and members of the board. Uh, my name is Ben Reese. I'm the Director of Infrastructure Delivery for the High-Speed Rail. Basically means I'm in charge of everything that's in construction here in the Central Valley, so um, you know, Samer kind of took you over kind of like the program-wide um statistics and benefits. I'm going to uh walk you through what we're doing in, in Kings County. So um, construction package two-three extends sixty-five miles. It covers Fresno, Kings, and Tulare County. Um, it's our, our largest construction package in terms of length. Um, and uh we have five large fire ducts. Um, um, almost fifty overpasses and great separations or bridges, and so many of those in Kings County, so. Next slide. This is just um a line diagram of the alignment of a high-speed rail as it goes through Kings County. Um, our alignment enters Kings County there, um, north of the community of Layton, um, as it crosses State Route forty-three. Um, one of the first um Kings County roads that we cross over is nine. Um, one of the first, um, Kings County roads that we cross over is Ninth Avenue. Um, then it extends on the east side of the city of Hamford, kind of a straight alignment as it goes, um, you know, uh, east of State Route forty three comes over to, um, where we'll have the station where we have the Hamford Viaduct. Um, stays on a straight alignment. And then as it gets to Jackson Avenue, it crosses back over State Route forty three, goes over on the west side. Um, and there's a curved alignment and then it exits, you know, Kings County there at Whitley Avenue near the city of, of Corcoran. Um, what this slide shows, it shows a green dot for the structures that have been completed. A yellow dot is a structure that's currently in progress. Um, and the red dot is structures that, um, we have yet to start, but we're looking to start here pretty soon. Um, one of the, one of the structures you'll see there is Houston Avenue. They're just south of Hamford Armona. We heard, you know, the concerns here by your board and by members of your public about closing that road concurrently with, uh, Hamford Armona, but we're not going to do that. I can assure you, we're going to complete Hamford Armona Road first, um, get that road open before we, uh, come or close Houston Avenue. And, um, yeah. And then the other thing you'll see here is the yellow also shows the hatching on our guideway. You can see we've placed a lot of the dirt on our actual guideway except for the area there near the Hamford Viaduct. Um, it's not completely topped off. We're not completely done with, with the guide. But what we have placed a lot of dirt, a lot of the material that we need for, for the guideway there throughout Kings County. So that's, um, uh, and as, and as Summer mentioned, um, twenty twenty six will be done by twenty twenty six. So.
January or December?
Twenty twenty six. It'll be, uh, closer towards the end of the year. So, uh, next slide. Uh, just a little bit of our nomenclature in case you hear me, uh, say certain things. So great. What is a great separation? It just means that we're, um, separating the roadway from the railway. Um, of course, at high speed rail, we'll be traveling at high speeds. So everything that crosses our alignment will be great separated. So that's why you see, um, many, uh, structures that go over alignment. And in some instances, our structures will go over the county roadways. Um, obviously it's for safety. We can't have, you know, vehicles crossing our alignment if we got trains going over two hundred miles an hour. Um, and that's, you know, the primary reason. So that's why we have to build a lot of structures. And, um, and move a lot of dirt basically. So next slide. Again, just a little bit more of our, our nomenclature. Um, you see here pictures, a couple of pictures on the right, Ninth Avenue, that structure supports, you know, the high speed train going over Ninth Avenue. So we call that a type one structure. Type one structure support high speed rail. Type two structures, uh, go over the top of high speed rail. And so an example of that is Kent Avenue there on the, on the lower right. So. Next slide. So what, what I'll, what I'll do now is just, we'll show you a bunch of, of pictures or photo slides, uh, starting at the north end, going south, so that you can see the progress of construction. This here is Ninth Avenue grade separation. It carries, you know, high speed rail over, um, over Ninth Avenue. This structure is completely, completely done. We still have some work to do on the guideway. Um, one of the things that, um, we committed to in our settlement agreement with the county was that we have, um, some of our structures meet certain dimensions or meet, uh, certain, um, geometric requirements. For example, on Ninth Avenue, we had to provide thirty two foot clear width under the structure. And so that's what we've done. We've met all those commitments in, in our design and construction. So. Next slide. Just another, another example of a completed structure. This is the Cairo Avenue grade separation. Again, um, type one structure going over Cairo. And it's a thirty two foot clear width underneath the structure. So. Um, next slide. Uh, Kings River Bridge. So this is the bridge structure going over the Kings River. We're currently in construction here. What you see here is a temporary work trestle to the right. The structure will actually be kind of off to the left there. What you see there is the structure, uh, the foundations are in. And so, um, plan is to get the superstructure in or the, what you, uh, the actual structure that goes over the waterway. Is what's, is the next phase of construction. This structure is scheduled to be completed in third quarter of twenty twenty five. So what you'll see is here next year, a lot of those structures are starting to be completed. Next slide. The Dover Avenue grade separation. This structure is completed. It's open to traffic. Um, again, this structure was constructed forty feet wide to meet the requirements of our, uh, settlement agreement with the county. We do have a little bit more work to do here on the connector. That's kind of off to the left. Um, we expect that to be completed by the end of the year to get that, uh, the connector road opened up. Uh, next, next slide. This is the Excelsior Avenue grade separation. Um, another type two structure. The structure itself is pretty much completed. We have some utility to work to do. Um, opt like to the left here so that we can tie in the roadway. But since it's an off alignment structure, uh, doesn't require closure of the roadway. So we expect this to be completed fourth quarter of twenty twenty five. Next slide please. And this is just the Flint Avenue grade separation. Uh, this was completed last year, fourth quarter. So, uh, you can see here some, uh, this is probably during our bridge opening. We have some, uh, vehicles on the roadway. Um, but again, just another example of our type two structures. So we've completed quite a bit of the work in Kings County. Next slide please. Again, this is Fargo. Um, this is a structure that's currently under construction. It's about eighty five percent complete, expected to be complete here, fourth quarter of this year. So later this year, we'll have this structure completed and, and open to traffic. Next slide. Grangeville. So this is here just the east of the city of Hamford. Uh, this structure has not started yet. Um, we have some utility relocations to complete so that we can start this structure. Um, there's an important agreement before your board later today that, uh, we need to get hopefully approved so that we can, uh, um, proceed with the utility relocation so that we can start construction on this structure. Excellent. And then this is the Hamford Viaduct. I think a lot of you are familiar with this structure. It's here near the city of Hamford. It's our largest structure on the program. It's over one mile long. We've done a lot of work here. It's, uh, about seventy five percent complete. We've got almost a thousand girders that were fabricated by our contractor here, um, near the city of Hamford, near this construction site. And we expect the structure to be complete here, uh, fourth quarter of next year. Next slide. And then this is the Hamford Armona Road grade separation. Um, this structure is currently under construction. What you see here is the, um, approach fills that have been placed. Um, we're waiting for those, those big piles of dirt cause the, uh, ground below to, um, compress. We're waiting for that a settlement to complete so that we can start building the structures. We expect to start building the structure here in the next month or so. Next slide. Um, at Houston. So like I mentioned before, um, we won't actually close this road to start this structure until Hamford Armona is complete. What we're doing right now is we're getting all the utilities out of the way so that we can open up the area to, to build our embankments and build the structure. So we're doing that work now ahead of time so that when, uh, Hamford Armona is complete, we can start building the structure. Next slide. This is just, I had to go great separation. This was completed in second quarter of twenty twenty three. Next slide. And this is the Jackson Avenue great separation, also completed third quarter of twenty twenty two. Next slide. Jersey, this is the structure that we're, that is currently under construction. Um, it'll take State Route forty three over our alignment. Um, you can see here the approach embankments have been constructed, again, waiting for those to come out of settlement so that we can start the actual, uh, bridge construction. Um, we expect, uh, this to be complete first quarter of twenty twenty six. Next slide. So the Kent Avenue great separation. This is one of the first structures we started back in the day. And this was completed in the third quarter of twenty twenty two. Um, I think this one and Jackson were the ones that were a little bit narrower than forty feet, but all the other structures were forty feet to accommodate, you know, agricultural equipment. Next slide. Uh, the Kansas Avenue great separation also completed, uh, fourth quarter of twenty twenty three. Just a picture of that. Next slide. And then this is the Lansing Avenue structure. We're spending some utility relocations here. We expect to start this structure in the first quarter of twenty twenty five. It's, it's a box, it's a box structure. It's not as big as some of our type two over crossings. And so, um, it's not as major of a structure, but we expect this to start first quarter of twenty twenty five. And then this is the Cross Creek Viaduct. This is one of our major structures, um, going over the Cross, Cross Creek Flood Plain. We experienced some major flooding here about a year and a half ago. And so we, we got to see uh, how much water can come through here. And so this is a pretty large viaduct. We've got all the foundations pretty much in place. Now working to, um, we're basically above the ground now. We expect this structure to be, be complete third quarter of twenty twenty five. Uh, and this is the curve bridge structure that we're continuing going south. Um, what you see here on the left is the, uh, temporary detour that we have in place for State Route forty three. Um, our alignment's kind of like right in the middle of the page. Um, we've started, uh, basically bringing in, uh, the fill material to get up, up and over our alignment. Um, and so the structure, um, is currently in settlement as well. And we expect this structure to be complete second quarter of twenty twenty six.
Mr. Chair, um, just real quick, uh, while you got that slide up on the south bound right there. When you're, um, coming south on Highway forty three and you start getting to, um, the detour on forty three, that's one, that's one, um, complaint that I get a lot that, uh, it's a little confusing, especially at night. As you're coming down, it looks like you're supposed to follow, s- s- still stay on the highway and curb to the right, but you guys have, that's where, obviously you guys have, have it blocked off now and you have the, uh, trash cans, the bright trash cans out there, the rubber trash cans to, in case somebody hits that.
Yeah.
But, um, can you, can you send that concern up your chain? Maybe, maybe more lighting or maybe, um, repave that area because the white stripe breaks to the right and, and it got me one time, but, but now I know, right? But for anyone who might be new to the area or especially when the fall comes in and you're following that white line sometimes, I could see that being an issue there.
Definitely. We'll, we'll take a look at that with the contractor.
If a highway breaks to the left.
Yes.
But it used to break to the right. The detour takes to the left.
Yeah.
It might, it might need a little bit more, um, highlighted attempt.
Or safety is number one. So we'll, we'll definitely take a look at that.
Hey, thank you.
Yes. Next slide. Nevada Avenue. This is just an area where it was going to be a type two, uh, over crossing, but, um, based on our settlement agreement, this rotor will be closed. So we'll build a cul-de-sac here at this location. And so that work will, um, start here in the near future, scheduled to be complete second quarter of twenty twenty six. Next slide. And then this is the Corcoran Highway grade separation. Um, we started that work here recently. I know on our first slide, one of our first slides that showed it is red, but we've started doing some, uh, uh, dirt operations here. Um, we've been able to work with our contractor to get the, work around some utility lines. Um, currently this, this particular structure is scheduled to be complete second quarter of twenty twenty six. Next slide. And then this is the Whitley Avenue underpass. And so here you can see, um, this particular, uh, structure will go underneath high speed rail. Uh, Whitley will be kind of in a, in a trench, so to speak. What you see here are the two box structures that have been built by our contractor to accommodate the vehicles, uh, going under the guideway. This particular structure started back before all the floods. We started work here and, uh, but our contractor and, uh, and as we worked with, uh, the locals to, uh, basically abort the construction, repave that road and get it opened, um, to accommodate, you know, the, um, all the flood, flood relief, but also just, uh, provide some routes out in and out of the city of Corcoran. Um, and so, um, we've been able to get construction going again. And so we're getting to the point, we're getting pretty close to completion. Uh, we hope to have this, uh, uh, rotor back open again in, uh, by the end of this year. Next slide. Um, and that's pretty much kind of like everything that's we have in, under construction right now. Um, we have our planning team, uh, that's working on, uh, some of our future stuff, which is also kind of exciting. I'm not necessarily the expert on this particular thing. And I know we're in the early stages, the concept stages, uh, but we are of course going to have a a station here, uh, in Kings County, just east of the city of Hamford. Um, here is, um, at the location of the Hamford Viaduct. And this is just one of the preliminary plans that we have from our planning department. Um, that shows some of the features that they're looking at for the, for the upcoming station. Um, we'll have, the access will come in off the current, uh, Lacy Boulevard roundabout there, just, uh, east of the Costco here. Um, and so this is just in the preliminary stages. I know our planning teams have been meeting with some of your staff to go over some of these ideas and certainly, uh, you know, I'm sure there's upcoming meetings as well to keep you informed on this, but just wanted to give you an idea of what's going on here, some of the things that we have coming up in the future. And so that's in the planning stages right now. And so just wanted to give you an idea of that. Uh, next slide. And, um, uh, some of the things that, you know, we're here, we're here in the community, our contractors are here. Um, we mentioned a little bit about the flooding and some of the things that we did, um, during, you know, that time. Also, um, you know, part of our settlement agreement, the authority contributed a million dollars to this, uh, Corcoran Veterans Memorial, um, monument, um, and park, which is a beautiful park there in the city of Corcoran. We've had a chance to, to be out there a few times. Um, our contractor, who's our project director is actually here, um, and as well, um, present and, uh, they graciously helped out with, uh, erecting the, um, these monuments. You can see the crane in the background that was provided by our contractor and was actually our project director is also a veteran. So, um, he was very excited to be a part of this. So, um, want to help out as much as we can in the community while we're here. So that's an example of that. And then next slide. And then I talked about it a little bit. Um, you know, we had the, the flooding, um, back about a year and a half ago. Um, it impacted our project, but obviously it impacted the community. And so we wanted to do what we could to help out as much as we could. There, you see some pictures of our contractor, um, putting down some asphalt to reopen Whitley Avenue. Um, because there was limited access in and out of the city of Corcoran. Um, we were day and night here to get that road back open in just a matter of days. Um, and so we wanted to do what we could to help out. But also we, uh, uh, worked with, uh, your public works department and the sheriff's office to provide items like as K rail to close off roads that were flooded and things like that. So, um, yeah, so it's a, and, um, you know, just an example of how we're here to partner, uh, with the local community. And, uh, you know, we've been working well with Dominic and his team as we work through these, um, the construction here in, in Kings County. So, um, that's what we, we've got here today. Be happy to answer any questions if.
Well, thank you. Thank you for working with our sheriff and public works during the flooding. I know it was, we had, everybody was curious to see what was going on, but then we have to go out there and get their vehicles when they got stuck. So.
Yes.
Uh, had to kind of block them. So do any questions from the board?
I have a couple of comments, Mr. Chair.
Well, yeah, thank you, Chair. Um, one, thank you, uh, for coming down and, um,
and, uh, more importantly, informing the public and, uh, the word from the presentation will spread. And I know there's people online, um, getting some good information here too. Thank you for, uh, helping to, uh, let the air out of the issue on the dual road closure. That was important. A lot of folks here who came to our chambers and they're very, uh, vocal about it. So appreciate you guys, uh, hearing that out and, uh, making a decision there. Um, one of the, one of the questions I got, I know early on when you guys, um, uh, got near Corcoran and, and you started moving dirt and pulling dirt, uh, um, digging up a lot of dirt out of there, the dust mitigation factor, um, you know, was pretty bad at that time. And, and we made a phone call and I think overnight you guys, um, hired a street sweeper to just constantly be out there on Highway forty three, going north and south in that area and cleaning up the mud. Um, from, uh, the, the dirt trucks pulling out on Highway forty three is leaving a lot of, uh, uh, dust there on, on the highway and it was becoming a problem. So, but that being said, there's still a lot of dust in the area. Can you talk about your dust mitigation efforts, especially near Corcoran?
Yeah. I mean, I know that when we start moving a lot of dirt, obviously it can be kind of dusty. So we have water trucks, um, that are out there trying to mitigate that dust. Like you mentioned, street sweepers, if some of that dirt gets, uh, call, um, you know, pushed out onto, onto the traveled way. And so we got, um, you know, street seaper, street sweepers, um, water trucks and that sort of thing. And so, um, obviously it's a, it's an effort that we need to, that we make it, we make an effort to try to keep that dust down. But obviously, you know, if we, if we do hear, um, concerns and stuff, we, um, I'll just put a little extra focus on it. So.
Okay. Thank you. And we can contact Dominic to get ahold of you for issues like that?
Absolutely. Yes.
And, um, you know, looking at the alignment and, uh, seeing the update, thanks for helping to explain that. Cause I know it gets confusing. A lot of people when you see construction to the, uh, east of forty three, construction in the west of forty three. So you did a good job of explaining, um, the alignment, but I, I do want to note those, you know, as we go back ten years and, um, at that time, the alignment was a lot different than that. And so, um, I just want to once again, thank all the people that, you know, spent a lot of time back. I just want to once again thank all the people that, you know, spent a lot of time back then, we'd take busloads on a monthly basis, Sacramento, going to high, high speed rail authority board meetings and with a lot of folks who, who lived in that area and were very concerned about negative impacts due to the alignment and was asking for some changes. And so and a lot of those people are no longer here because they did, you know, they did get a check from High Speed Rail Authority to to relocate and move and 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 their homes got, those homes are gone. And and so, but I, I want to thank those people for a lot of those efforts because even when you look at the the update you gave near Corcoran, at one time that alignment was going to split Corcoran right in half. It was going to come right down dead center of the city and literally just cut downtown Corcoran in half and and that was not good. And so, you know, we were very vocal about that. And so as, as we see it, now I understand why it swings from the east over to the west because you guys made some changes on that. And then lastly, I do want to thank you guys again publicly for the efforts during, during the flood. Your crews, as you stated, they, they were there night and day, tearing apart all the work that they had already done on Whitley Avenue. And I would go out there a couple of times a day. And those workers were very motivated and concerned for the city of Corcoran. And we're moving very quickly to reopen that road so the community would have another entry exit level, especially in a time of close emergency when tensions were extremely high at that time. And then lastly, very nice picture of the Five Pillars of Freedom in the presentation, and and that's from the day that we unveiled at very nice ceremony and Mr. Tom Richards, your vice chair of the High Speed Rail Authority, you know, it was a pleasure to have him there. He was one of our keynote speakers. And for those who don't know, Mr. Richards flew helicopters in Vietnam. And so a lot of the, there were some veterans there whose homes were displaced too due, due to that high speed rail alignment, but they were there and they were, they were supportive because you know, at this time, we were honoring all veterans across the United States of America and Mr. Richards being a veteran and and also by that time, the community knew that three years prior to the unveiling, we unveiled the million dollar check there to the community to promise to build something very beautiful. And we kept our word together. And the cranes did help when the Five Pillars came from Memphis on the truckload. Obviously, those are very heavy structures. And so we were going to have to go look to get those cranes. And so appreciate you guys taking the meeting, hearing us out and bringing your resources and being helpful and swinging these beautiful statues off the truck beds onto the anchor I'm on. And I got a great video of that. I'll have to share some of that with you guys if you don't have any.
Yeah.
But all that, all that was captured. So thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, a lot of thanks to our project director, Sean Lind, who's our, he was more than gracious to offer up that, that service and those greens and his workers as well. So that was big thing to Sean.
We, we made sure we gave all your staff memorial coins from that day, the decorative coins. But if there's some of your staff here today that didn't get coins, I think Catherine, the clerk might have a couple of coins. Do you do? I like to make sure that that they leave with some of those coins on there.
Great. Thank you. Thank you very much.
So thank you again for coming. I know it's important to, to share what's going on in the community. We get hit hard with questions we cannot answer, and we don't want to get the wrong answer out there. So maybe we can plan to do this again in six to nine months. Or as you complete milestones in your project, it'd be nice to understand where we're at. I know that Kings County was instrumental in, in being a thorn in your guy's side back in twenty eleven, but we just want to see you out of our community now and finish your project. So thank you for, for joining up today. I appreciate it. And you know, so get this thing done and, and make it be productive in the community. So thank you.
Thank you. We'll be back.
Dominic?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, if I might, I just want to say a few words. So in addition to being very helpful and, and easy to work with on a day-to-day basis, excuse me, going back to the floods, with the exception of the first few pieces of K rail that we secured from Caltrans, we were having difficulty closing those roads. As you know, people were not honoring the roadside signs. We're ending up with cars flooded. Sheriff can attest to that. Made a call to High Speed Rail without exception, all of those pieces of K rail out there, again, with the exception of the first couple, were provided by High Speed Rail at no cost to the county. They, they, no questions asked. They, they told us we can go to the yard and get as many as we need. So there was a huge help during the flood.
No, thank you.
Just want to put that out there.
Well, the only thing we like to get done would be the power pole on Denver or Dover that PG needs to move. So if we could help you any way, get that out of here. That's the biggest complaint I got from the growers out there about having to drive two or three miles out of the way to go around that area. So.
Yeah, we're shooting to get that done by the end of this year. So like a few months or so.
Is it PG D holding up? Because Richard Valley has inside line.
I think we got that work all worked out. So.
Okay, good. And that's the biggest complaint I got right now. It's just nonstop. But I think, you know, we talked about this. I went and met you guys two weeks ago, and I appreciate you taking time out of your day and explaining what's going on and showing me the slides. I think it's important to make sure we understand what's going on before it happens so we can, you know, squash any rumors before it happens. I think last time we had a rumor out there saying that the road was going to be shut. They got to drive. And now we're being threatened by attorneys saying we're going to be sued if there's accidents. So yeah, just keep in touch. And if there's something that we need to hear about, you know, don't be afraid to reach out to our staff to put it on the agenda. We can discuss it. No, thank you.
Sounds good. Thank you so much.
Appreciate it. Okay, if there's no questions, we'll move on to the next item, which is Public Works. And we have Dominic.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Dominic Tiverski, Public Works Director. And before you this morning, seeking approval of the three-party joint use agreement, J U A between Kings County, Southern California Edison Company and the California High Speed Rail Authority. And I'm also asking for authorization for the chairman to sign this agreement. As part of the settlement agreement between the county and the California High Speed Rail Authority, executed in August of twenty nineteen, the county has agreed to participate and act in good faith regarding the High Speed Rail Project. Scope of the High Speed Rail Project impacts existing utilities requiring their relocation. In some instances, the utility may be under franchise or may have an easement or partial easement. In order to relocate the utilities and keep all interested parties' rights and responsibilities intact, a J U A is necessary. This J U A preserves SoCal Edison's private easement advantages while not encumbering the county for any future relocations. And from the county's perspective, it essentially would function as a franchise agreement. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
Thank you, Dominic. Any question or comments? No, nothing. I have a motion.
I'd like to make the motion as presented, Mr. Chair.
Motion approved by Supervisor Valley, second by Superintendent Fagundis, Madelcar, Quick Call Rule.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
All right.
Doug Verboen.
Yes.
Restu Robinson.
Yes.
Richard Fagundis.
Yes, I'm in favor. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on now to board, board member announcements and reports, and we'll start with Supervisor Robinson.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let's see, last Tuesday, attended the Armonity, Armona Community Service District meeting. I thanked them in person for their work with the replacement light bulbs, the LED lights. And we talked about a few that still haven't been done that we have to address, particularly those on Fourteenth Avenue. Also met with a couple of department heads in reference to some constituent concerns. And on Friday, attended a sold-out crowd at Tachi Palace with supervisors for the state of the county presentation. So good job to Chairman Verboen, CEO Martinez, Bolietta Martinez, and Fabio Ianni for a good overview of county operations. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Valley.
Yes, that was a good event. Congrats to, to all. And it was, it was a job well done. Karia, good job on the presentation as well. Super Ben, that, that was a good way to round everybody up. And we look forward to the next one.
I had a longer speech, but I looked out there at the crowd. I'm like, yeah, I think they've had enough.
Yeah.
Period warmout.
Yes, she went about twenty minutes.
Long, too long.
Twenty, twenty.
Too long.
Yeah, it was good. It moved along. It was a good pace. If we do it in the evening next year, it might be better. You, everybody get a glass of wine in or something.
Yeah, I could.
The crowd will be warmed up for you.
I could use some wine.
There you go. Let's share. The other thing I wanted to say was Doc, all right, lose track. Well, lost my train, my train of thought. I do want to say.
Movie coming out.
Paul Rodriguez's movie, Holy Cash.
Holy Cash.
Movie premiered tomorrow night, Latino Water Coalition. We're working to, to an ice red carpet for Paul Rodriguez. He's been a friend to Kings County and the Valley, especially in our, our efforts to get our fair share of water over the years. I'm not in the movie. I'm not in the movie. But, but I saw the movie on Friday. I wanted to be there for the first showing. There at Maya Cinemas, and it's, it's a very funny movie. And in fact, people in the movie industry are calling this the best independent film they've seen in forty years. And so Paul had this vision for this movie. You, we've heard him talk about it over the years when it was just a script. So he wrote, he produced, directed the movie. He went out and he had to raise the money from investors over the couple of years. And so in the middle of that, he had a quadruple bypass surgery. And a lot of ups and downs. So I can't wait to see him tomorrow night where he will be there. And we attach some laughs and watch the movie together with him.
Very good. Thank you. The pleasure, uh, Fagundis. Good. Good by the Nevs.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Last Tuesday, the Kings County Office of Ed opened up the Dream Center. That's going to be a resource for students in foster care and homeless students and support their educational needs as well as other needs like the food pantry, laundry room, and other resources needed for school success. Continue to plan the public safety event in Kettelman on October twenty-fourth. With Rhonda not being here, there left a big void. So we're trying to make sure we get all, all of that covered. The continue to announce volleyball at Lamoore College. And then the King Symphony held their Fall Conference at the Fox Theater on Sunday. And with that, thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. I don't have much. Just to thank all the staff that helped with the state of the county and Economic Development Corporation for, you know, getting it out there for us. Also, on Friday evening, I attended a kind of a fundraiser kind of tied into with our state of the county with the Venice Health. They, they're doing a new forty million dollar wing onto the hospital for heart health. And there was a heart health kickoff fundraiser on Friday night. Went to that. This time we'll go to board correspondent. Here you.
Thank you, Doug. So the board receives the September twenty twenty-four monthly Kings County Investment Pool Transaction Activity Report dated October fourth. The board received correspondence from the, from Fresno City College Veterans Resource Center dated October second regarding invitation to the annual Veterans Day Ceremony. The board received correspondence in English and Spanish on October fourteenth from Valley Voices regarding the hosting Avonale Candidate Forum scheduled for October fifteenth. And lastly, the board received correspondence on October fourteenth from Dignity Memorial regarding them hosting the Century of Dignity on November fourth at the People's Funeral Chapel. For upcoming events, Behavioral Health, Behavioral Health will host its Veterans Support Group next Tuesday, October twenty-second from five thirty, seven thirty at the Veterans Memorial Hall in Hamford. Fire Department will host its public safety event on Thursday, October twenty-fourth at Kettelman City Park from five to seven P M. We have various resources, raffle prizes and food and beverage for the whole family. Kings County Library will host its Fall Book Sale next Saturday, October twenty-sixth at the Hamford Library from ten A M. to two P M. And for upcoming agenda items for next week's board meeting, administration has two items, an update on the American Rescue Plan Act allocation, update approving some issuance of qualified fire five oh ones bond for rental senior living community. Behavioral Health has a study session on a grant they are applying for. Health has an item on advanced step higher. Human Resources continues their county service award presentations for the next few board meetings and Human Services Agency will have an agreement on the social services legal consultation representation approval program. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we'll move to closed session as, as outlined, and we'll see you back here on October twenty-second. Thank you, Will Jordan.
Just a reminder, we do have a special meeting this afternoon at one P M.
We have a special meeting. Thank you.